And I think we'll need to do a budget amendment either way. Because I'll either have to add money into my match account. For that, because that's not, that grant doesn't a hundred percent pay for both positions. Or we're gonna have to then pull possibly salary reserve to pay the position.
Okay.
Would you, would you feel like there was a piece from both? For instance, worst case scenario happens. Would there be some from grant match, some from salary reserve to make up those positions? I'm just trying to figure out like how to detail it in salary reserve. So that if the worst case comes. If there's four thousand salary reserve, there's seventy thousand towards this. Then we say there's three thirty in salary reserve, seventy thousand that is to this, so we don't. I know you won't forget.
Yeah.
But I'm worried that I might forget.
And I think, so. I mean, I think at this point, we just don't budget any additional except the twenty five thousand dollars coming from the city. We don't budget anymore in my match account. We don't budget anymore, period. Comes September, October, we deal with it at that point. Moving forward, what are we looking at? Do we have the grant we're gonna move for with the grant and then partial match? Or do we need to pull a hundred percent out of the salary reserve?
I think is, Eric, what you're saying is you wanna earmark it. I don't think we can even earmark it because it'll be supplanted. So we can't even earmark. We can have an idea of what it would be, but we can't even designate it anywhere in the budget. Because if we designate it, then we can't use it. Or we can't use the criteria if we get it.
Yeah.
But I understand where you're coming from, like looking at how much is in the salary reserve. What would the amount be if we had to pull it out of there? But we can have a discussion about that.
And there is two positions on there. So one is actually required, the other one isn't. So that's.
A decision to discuss with Eric.
The sheriff's office has contingencies for the worst case scenario. It happens in October to be the first of those.
Sicker shots position or something like. The salary reserve has a little over two and a half.
But that's my recommendation for that. And unfortunately, we just haven't heard yet. But we're not the only people in this position, so let's get them out.
Because, because it's a federal grant, we have to be very, very careful to not supplant. And then we should, by Bailey's recommendations, most baiting so towards me and the federal preschool years.
Yeah, it's, it's great advice. I just wanted to highlight.
Yeah.
Save that in there if we, instead of getting to the end and going, oh, well.
I mean, I can let you know how much like, how, what the amount would be.
Right.
Um, but again, we still can't earmark it anywhere.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Terry. Did you, you're still standing. You didn't get hit by the tornado.
You're muted, Terry, if you're.
If you're trying to talk to us.
Can I unmute it from here? Ask her to unmute maybe, but.
Bailey, do you want me to bring up your spreadsheet?
Sure.
I got it, I think.
Sure did.
Thank you. It was probably your magic touch, Thad.
I don't think so.
Okay, so Bailey, do you, so we'll go over one percent. Are you guys okay with that? Okay. I'll just let you touch it. Don't you see that? You can hide. In short months.
Let's hide. I can make it a little bit bigger than that.
Okay. Can everybody somewhat see that?
So, um, after last meeting, I asked you all to complete the allocations. And these are the results of that. So if there's ones you'd like to discuss, if there's changes you'd like to make, we can do that. We can leave it if you want. Whatever you would like.
Did you just, I can't see it very well, but, so did you guys do, did you do a blending of this?
Yeah, so, uh, we took the average, Terry, between you and Thad.
Okay.
I'll try to make it bigger, Terry, and then I can scroll.
What was the total? Two hundred and thirty-five thousand, yeah.
So I'll just lead off with my, my approach to it. I applied a six percent from the award, uh, last year, a cut of six percent. And then, um, I tried to get to two thirty-five as, as close as I could. And I didn't, uh, give anybody less than a thousand dollars. Um, so I wouldn't give anybody nine seventy when they ask for a thousand dollars. And then if there was a new submission, um, that submission was a thousand dollars. How we do this. Because if somebody asks for a hundred thousand dollars, we have two hundred fifty thousand dollars to spend. They get a hundred thousand dollars, they're soaking up forty percent of community partner funding. And as much as I'd like to be able to determine one versus the other, working in the space, I don't believe I, I can determine what's more important than the next. And so, um, so that's what, that was my strategy, um, to setting it, uh, about. I would ask, um, if you guys are gonna talk about the downtown clinic, that you either do it first or last. And that you give me time to just leave the room, um, so that, um. I don't want any part of the conversation and I don't want to ask any questions, because I'm not gonna. So, um, but that's, that was my strategy for, uh, community partners.
I don't know that I necessarily had a strategy, other than to focus, um, more of the, the funding that directly affected people's quality of life or their ability to live. Some of that, uh. I was a little hesitant on giving to, uh, some of the more. Animal specific entities. And right now, I'm just looking at how much Pilot Hill has been given this year. I, I thought that one more request was probably unnecessary.
I can't say that I had a particular strategy. I believe that the animal requests should all be private. I did go forward with Pilot Hill because I've been on Pilot Hill from the beginning. And I would like to see this get solidified and completed. Certainly can't say that I would go forward with them next year, but this year I'm going to. And, um, generally, I want to make sure that people get to eat and, um, have care.
I guess my question is, are you guys comfortable with this? Is this? How you would like us to move forward with the proposed budget?
The development of preschool, um. I'm a big believer in preschool, but if they did not. To put their report on something that we said you need your report and we won't consider their funding.
It wasn't development preschool, it was common outdoor ground, the one that I emailed you, um, that we didn't get Friday.
Uh, there was, the common outdoor ground came on Sunday, didn't it?
Yeah, and it was Friday. Developmental preschool I have.
Oh, I am so sorry.
No, it's okay, it's okay.
Because I want to change that then.
That's fine, would you like to change it?
Yeah, I certainly would, so, um.
You tell me what number you'd like me to.
Yeah, so, so a thousand six percent, so sixty, uh, six hundred. All right, well, I, my.
This is a working document.
Common outdoor ground was the only one we, we got it, but I got it two days late from the non-compliant letter date. Um, everybody else had gotten theirs in. And like I was saying earlier, common, it surprised me because usually they're on top of it, but they didn't make that deadline. So, that's, that's the only one.
Thank you, thank you, I'm so glad I asked the question. So I guess what was the average award, what does that all average up to?
Two twenty-eight, seven thirteen.
Would anybody like to make adjustments to that? Or do you want to go space by space, or do you want to?
I don't know, how, how have you done it before? And I don't know.
So we did it, I think.
Last year was the first year we did it this way.
Okay, I wasn't trying to hit a magic, magic number, I, I just, yeah. And then obviously, if there's, if we're allocating two twenty-eighths, then I would ask that the remainder of that go into holding for allocation outside. Like we discussed as a reserve throughout the year, so, um.
Yeah, I, thank you for, for doing that. I think if we could get as close to two thirty-five, the nonprofit world is a very scary place. Um, it is what, if our grants don't come into us next year, that's where they're existing right now. But, um. I think.
Go ahead, Pete.
I think we have like sixty-two hundred bucks on the average that we could divvy, divvy it up amongst other, amongst the nonprofits and still be at two thirty-five.
Yep, I think that'd work.
That's fine.
How would you like to divvy it? Because it's gonna do an average if I change.
Well, then so Kayla, in, on, um, call my. You want to, you just put in what they want. Let's be discussed it then.
Okay.
And then, um.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna start the model.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we just want to go line by line and you.
What's our grand total right now, or what's the average total?
Two twenty-eight, seven fifteen.
So that's sixty-two hundred eighty-seven dollars.
You have thirty-seven, so that's about two hundred, um, uh, adding two hundred dollars to each one. But if somebody reads the max, then we probably shouldn't do that.
Do we just want to do two hundred across?
App, you want to do that? And then I guess. Or, yeah, or makes a average award closer to.
Go ahead, Terry.
I'd just say, yeah, I'm willing to just say two hundred dollars across the board.
Or to the where they requested. So for instance, ARC is five grand they requested, or at four nine six seven, just get them to five grand.
Right, not, not above.
Yeah. So then Albany would be two, five, three, four, the top one.
We just do twenty-five hundred.
Sure.
Sorry. I think I have my Amanda, even numbers, they're.
Much better.
Big brothers.
Big brothers, yes.
Fever home nineteen-eight. Klein, they're at a thousand.
A thousand.
Common outdoor ground, six thousand seven hundred thirty-four.
Or we just. Or you still have the ninety-six hundred, so, okay.
What about sixty-seven?
Yep, perfect. Seven for developmental preschool.
Let's skip to.
Skip me.
We'll skip it right now and then we can do it.
Go back.
Yep. Um, absence.
Ten, yep.
Do ten four.
Ten four.
Little buddy. Sorry.
Fifteen hundred.
And I don't know, if you guys want to do that, that's, that, I'm the only one who awarded these, so I feel free if you don't want to.
I, I just have hesitation because that's, uh, going on a, a, a nonprofit, on a for-profit. Location, and she does actually already have a structure up there, so.
Okay, I, I think I would like to remove my award on that, too. And the same with, uh, two forty-seven.
So twenty-eight eight. Nineteen eight. Are you waiting for us?
Eight hundred. Forty-seven hundred.
Thirty-eight.
Yeah. Thirty-eight.
What is our total looking like right now? Oh.
It's looking like number science.
Like nothing.
Okay.
Seventy-two.
Yeah.
Forty-two. Ten-nine. Thirty-three. Eleven-six. Twenty-two. Eighteen, or nine-five. Eight hu- eighteen-hundred.
Yeah, I didn't know if you were rounding up, rounding down, or.
Seven thousand.
Thank you, Bailey, I was daydreaming.
Thirty-eight hundred. Fifteen hundred.
We're at the max.
Yep. Eighty-four hundred. And forty-two hundred.
It's two twenty-eight, so.
Yep, for now.
If you guys want to do downtown clinic, Pete wants to.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. No, I'm saying because we're easy about. Where would you guys like to go with downtown clinic?
We're at five, and the only reason it's not at seventy-five is because Pete's not in here, so my suggestion would be seventy-five hundred.
You want to go to the formal?
Yeah.
Terry, are you okay with that?
Yep.
It puts us at two thirty-five, six.
Okay.
Are you guys good with that?
Yeah. Oh, I thought he went outside.
That door is so aggressive.
I'd like a rain report.
I thought he had headed to the men's room.
Nope.
We've all had to make those emergency runs from time to time.
Well, that puts us at two thirty-five, six.
So then fourteen-four would go in then the, um.
Reserve.
Yep, for any request that you would get later. This year.
Are these folks allowed to reapply, or if they have an opportunity?
That's up to you.
Okay.
So you just need to let us know.
I didn't know if there was any statute.
This is new, so, um, you guys are creating it, so we can do what you would like. Um, any requests, I think Kayla usually gets the random request throughout the year and she was.
And I'll bring it to you.
But yeah, uh, we will not make any decisions on that reserve account without your approval. Yeah, you don't have to go through.
It would just be another similar request.
Yeah, the only thing we do is if one of the entities that you did fund just changes. You know, they didn't have this, so they would just kind of, they didn't have like the security door staff, so they want to change it to something similar. We approve that, if it's something completely out of scope, I bring it to you.
Okay.
And I think I talked with Tracy, and we're gonna get this money out quicker this year, right? Tracy, are we still good to do that? So we used to not do the, get money out till December. Now I'm gonna do the agreements in July. If I'm on top of it, I can get it on July one meeting, we'll see. Uh, but we'll get that in July and then they can start requesting reimbursement as soon as they have an expedited agreement. So they don't have to wait till December of this year. You guys are good with that? All right. Kayla, did you see that?
No, Bailey, I didn't.
Hello?
Yes, I did. Okay. I don't, did you guys have any other questions?
I, I, just for the treasurer.
Okay.
So I know you got the final numbers from Chelsea. And the counties. Was that a significant change from what you were?
So it's a significant change from our initial talk of the six hundred and three thousand. The last time I figured it, it was at two hundred and forty-five, so that's another. I can't find that email, it hurts.
Hundred fifty, yeah, yeah.
So another ninety thousand. Which I haven't recalculated since I got that email. Should be working on the cash on hand. Um, not knowing what's gonna happen with Pilt, I know it's fully funded for the year, but how much that's gonna be, I just don't know. So without Pilt in there, an estimated cash on hand, I have it. Just short of one point six million. It leaves us another hundred thousand to find, so. Pilt comes in over a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
We have enough cash to cover where we are right now.
So Pilt comes over a hundred thousand more than you expect?
No, a hundred thousand, period.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have it calculated in there at all.
Okay, okay. Make sure.
If it comes in at eighty-five thousand, then we're looking at a different story, you know? But it's been in the millions, like last year's one point nine million. Um, which I, I expected. To be, but I almost don't want to say it out loud.
Right, right. And then I guess my question would be, some, which entities did not? Budget in a one percent raise for their staff?
I don't think any did, except for the sheriff.
Sheriff, for the sheriff's office.
I don't know, did I?
I don't think anybody did. I think as much as in, in any rings is.
I don't think I did unless. Amanda helped.
I was like, I didn't do it.
Well, Amanda did, uh.
I wasn't approached by anyone to put any extra in any salary.
All we were told was to cut.
Yeah, right, that's right.
Right, but how difficult would it be to? Put in a one percent.
It's not hard at all. I can have a spreadsheet ready, I can just hit one percent and it will.
Do you want to see what that looks like?
Could you tell me what that looks like?
Um, Bailey and I were just talking to, uh, while Amanda does that. Uh, talking about in the commissioners meeting today about Zach's, um, storage unit. And the possibility of the grant not covering that. Where the, the grant is not meant to cover it.
A grant at this point is not gonna cover it, so.
So my thought is, is, do you guys have a problem with us budgeting that into Kim's budget, public health? And then that would give the ability for Kim to store stuff there if she needed to as well. Because the grant wouldn't be paying for it, the county would be paying for it.
Is that something you can use, Kim?
Um, if it's paid through the county.
If it, because she can't right now because it's paid through the grant.
Oh.
So if they come to do their site inspections.
You, none of them, okay.
Yeah. They're very particular.
It's two and a thirty-two hundred dollars, but we could put it in, we could build it into Kim's budget if you guys are amenable to that. I don't know where else we would store his stuff. That's the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we're kind of maxed out on space.
And we're not gonna be in a position to build something just to store?
No.
Oh, okay.
Because it'd have to be temperature controlled, that's, you know what I mean, which is.
Most of your offices are temperature controlled?
I mean, because I don't think there's any available space that is in the storage. Let me put in my office, solid, there was a storage anywhere.
Get rid of all the boxes with plates in them?
Oh, we do, store plates.
Oh, no, your elections don't take quite a room over there.
No, I'm okay with budgeting, because I think it, it's great to have on hand and I don't want to see it go to waste, so.
Yeah.
Um, is, it's mostly mass casualty. Or supplied. Supply chain.
Like, oh, and ours.
Yeah.
PPE, yeah, like passes and downs and loves. They just stare. Yeah. If they're not. Store properly, like we have contacts.
Yeah, but that doesn't do you any good, because the temperatures are.
Yes.
Wait, yeah. No, I just remembered during COVID, that was the one thing I was locking up the most of was PPE and gloves.
Yeah.
And that was the most of what was getting stolen from commercial sites.
Yeah.
Jeez.
Well, that happened almost instantly.
That's crazy.
I guess just explaining my thinking on, the CPI went up two point four percent nationwide last year. One percent doesn't even get you halfway, um, but. If we can do it, I would like to do that. You showed those two percent I worked. If you can avoid it.
No.
Well, you guys can lose one point four percent in this passes, but, um, yeah. I don't know what that number will be.
Did anything change with retirement?
Um, the law enforcement's going up again, uh, one point eight percent this year. On the employer or the employee. Is how they do it.
So one point eight on each?
But we're, no. Point nine, point nine.
Point nine, point nine, okay.
But the staff goes up.
They.
In twenty twenty-six, doesn't it?
Yes, public will go up. And law enforcement will go up another one point eight, five point six as well. And then theirs is done, because there was, unless they do something else on this shit. But theirs was a three-year increase last year, this year, next year. Public, um. They didn't do anything with this year.
I was gonna say, I didn't think the public.
Again.
So right now, we have it budgeted that the county will cover all of that increase?
Uh, no, we have nothing. Right now, we didn't put anything, never discussed that.
So we need to discuss what you guys want to do.
And, and last year, just, uh, give a little context and correct me when I'm wrong. We brought up, uh, police officers to what we were doing for the county as far as retirement percentage, right?
Right now, we pay the same percentage, um, on both public and law enforcement.
Okay. And law enforcement gets a higher, um, contribution from the state than the county employees do. Is that correct?
Yeah. Our is at eighteen point six two and theirs is at twenty point eight right now, I think. Twenty-five, something, going up to, I can't give you the actual number here.
And the library resubmitted their one percent.
For the, yeah, they're going to twenty point eight, sorry.
I don't know what she said. Law enforcement's going to twenty point eight?
They're at nineteen right now, they're going to twenty point eight starting July first.
Government employees that aren't law enforcement. They're at nineteen right now.
No.
Or sorry, eighteen point six two, yeah, law enforcement right now is at nineteen. And then, yeah, public is eighteen point six two.
And then you were saying the library?
So the library, one, when Tracy sent out the updated. Level funding. Level funding, the change, we did change. There. One percent. They changed, so.
Is it in their folder?
Sixty, no.
It's on the.
We'll share this. We'll share this. Let's get, let's get into this.
We'll share this, let's get into this. So this was their number first. Twenty-nine, seven, sixty for their. I'm scrolling too fast. Sorry, I didn't see what. So that went down. And so the warm trace you took out of their level funding, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So their.
Us actually.
I'm ducking it. From there, yeah, they're still responsible for it, yes.
And so.
Theirs actually went down, and I'll show you the one percent.
Spreadsheet that I was on here. Give you some context, too.
No, you're right. This is our law enforcement. Library requested the ninety-four, seven, seventy, does that look correct, Tracy?
I hadn't looked at the one percent changes yet.
Rachel, does that look correct?
It does, I was gonna pull my other spreadsheet to like triple check, but yes, that does look correct. Yes, I've now triple confirmed, that's correct, the nine, four, seven, seven.
Thank you.
Yep.
Where is that at?
Um, it's under, P drive, under one percent.
Community partners?
Nope, the one is below it. One percent direct aid.
Okay. I had this all found two weeks ago and then.
Talked about miscellaneous uncommitted, we're gonna take that out of one.
Did you guys just update this?
We just updated those one right now. You have a question about specific?
No, the numbers aren't matching.
Yours aren't? Did you save it since you changed it and then? You know how sometimes.
I'm just seeing.
Do you have a read-only copy?
I'm sure I have a read-only copy.
Yeah. I just said that that's part of the.
I'm with you, that on this, it's, you got on mine, it says thirty-one, two, fifty, or warm.
Yeah, I just changed, so if you go out and come back in, she'll be good now.
Okay.
Sorry. Because, yeah, if she hadn't saved it and you opened it, the read only, then it's still the old.
We talked about miscellaneous uncommitted, what do we talk about with that? Why can't I remember now?
We put CISP in the one, we put it in CISP though, right? Or did we put?
We put everything.
Took out CISP out of the commissioners. And opt miscellaneous unanticipated or uncommitted. Just to, and more didn't quit having so many silos of money. So.
Miscellaneous uncommitted, we had nothing in there, we put it somewhere else?
No. Maybe he talked about it, but it didn't get.
It's regarding to the whole sheet. Miscellaneous uncommitted.
Or maybe it was the other one.
Or not having so many silos of money.
I know, we're trying to simplify it a little bit, because we have miscellaneous uncommitted, then you have CISP, and you know, and it's like. Why can we not just take it out of one? A one pot, so then you're not trying to remember, you know, you took this much out of this one, this much. I mean, ultimately, in my opinion, when it's coming out of miscellaneous uncommitted, something that's not budgeted, the money's budgeted, but maybe the project isn't, we always come to the board.
Just, yeah.
Well, we come to the board anyway, for you guys to. Indicate where you want that paid out.
I don't think you're trying to circumvent, I think it's.
No, we're trying to make it easier, um, I'm not sure that that happened quite yet.
We did take it out of CISP, so that zeroed out in there.
Okay. Move to miscellaneous uncommitted. I guess my question would be, so normally we budget a hundred thousand in CISP and a hundred thousand on miscellaneous uncommitted, would you like us just to put two hundred thousand in miscellaneous uncommitted? Would you like us to put a hundred and fifty? What would you like us, and that's for. Anything up that comes up through the year that. Is not anticipated.
Is there a reason to earmark differently?
What do you mean?
It, it, would there be any statutory reason we couldn't? Earmarker, or we, we can use it either way.
You can use it for whatever, the miscellaneous uncommitted, the nice thing is, is it's just used for whatever, like I said, if we had. Something happened and you needed money to fix something and we didn't have it budgeted, you could take it out of miscellaneous uncommitted. Um, I'm trying to think of what else we paid out of miscellaneous uncommitted, all kinds of things, yeah.
Statutorily, there isn't really any. Legals.
Okay.
What you do, you're restricting it by your resolution to adopt the budget. And that's where you're. I mean, miscellaneous uncommitted, it's not like you're saying, I'm using it for specific guardrails on the salad board. Yeah, it's nothing specific like that, it's just.
Sure. It's emergency cash.
Yeah, it, it, exactly. And we've always had CISP, which stands for capital improvement special projects, which we've. Not a great name, because we don't really have any capital improvement special projects that you're only gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars on, probably. So it was kind of, I think it was a place for us to put money and to be able to pay out of, but like Tracy and I were talking, it's, you have all these silos.
Sure.
It'd be easier if they were in one place and then you knew exactly what your balance was, you weren't pulling it out of. Two different places, but I guess my question for you guys is, how much would you like us to budget in there?
Two hundred grand is fine, and if there is an ERP category that encompasses that, that has the exact same name. But can we act to change it to that name right now, so that we're making the transition? We don't have to go back and try to remember.
Changing the name to be what?
To whatever ERP. Is there a, is there a budget line item when we make this transition over? That. Obviously, CISP probably is not gonna be in, in ERP. What makes it easier in the transition?
Do you want it to be something in, in the line of, say, commissioner discretionary?
Yeah, something like that. I think that's good.
Yeah. And I'm fine with two hundred.
Okay.
And I agree with the two hundred.
Okay, and then what would you guys like to do about the law enforcement, um, retirement?
So currently, the county share is nineteen percent for law enforcement and eighteen point six two for the general.
So that's the full amount.
Okay, so are, is it fifty-fifty right now, so it's nine?
No, so the county is contributing fifteen point two seven percent on both sides right now.
Okay, perfect.
Employee match is just the balance of that percentage.
Hmm. Three point three five for public and three point seven three for law.
And that's current, that's without the increase.
Yeah, eighteen point six two, yeah, nineteen. When it goes to twenty point eight, I just need to know what.
Just so we know what to budget.
So if we split that raise, um. It would, the law enforcement would be sixteen, seventeen, point one eight. And the non-law enforcement county, uh.
Law, non.
That, that's not until twenty-six, twenty twenty-six.
Right, so the non would be fifteen point two seven and the law enforcement would be seventeen point one eight. By mass, pretty close.
Alright, so you wanna do the.
Well, fifteen point two seven, yeah.
Plus the full one point eight?
One, plus point nine one.
Then, so seventeen point oh seven?
No, I did it wrong, sixteen point one eight, sorry, my math's bad. If you did, if you split it.
If you split it.
Is, is that what the numbers would be?
So do you want to do, uh, point nine?
Yeah.
For the employee and point nine for the.
Well, match sixteen point one seven. Okay, so we're gonna do. Fifty-fifty on the one point eight percent. Of that. I don't know that there's a formula to get, get there in the first place.
She's got her own spreadsheet.
It's not little, but she's got a spreadsheet.
Is that, change that?
Okay. And then, I guess what is the one percent repeated asked the?
So do you want for employees, law and department heads, or whoever you, because we split them off? I just need to know which.
Let's start with employees.
Okay. So that. Will take you about. Um, eighty-six thousand, eight hundred, forty-one dollars and seventy-two cents. Say that again. Eighty-six, eight, four, one, point seven two.
That's.
That's inclusive of everything that calculates on there, like. My workers' comp and all of that.
Total, yeah, yes.
So one percent essentially cost of living adjustment.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So by that, the sheriff's department's getting the two percent raise.
No.
No, just one across, one percent across.
They're getting the one percent from the general fund into their savings account, I think.
It's just one percent for.
Their retirement.
Oh.
I, I, I guess I'm asking. Right, I, I just don't see it being even. I, I see the law enforcement getting a point nine percent into their, uh, retirement. Which is coming from the general fund, right? So where is? The Roman Bridges employees. Point nine percent coming from. I know you're not doing it, but.
Well, yeah, for next year. Well, we're just looking at a number for me, Rob, I'm just looking at, trying to figure out what the number would be. And I understand your perspective and, and I, I agree with your perspective, so, um, two percent. Whether it's two percent, one percent now, one percent later, or one, two percent now, it's still two percent, and so, or one point nine percent. And so if, if that's what we, that was, uh, we tried to adjust last year to be equitable. Um, because I think county employees were getting more than, uh, from the general fund than this law enforcement was. Um, and so. I agree with you, so I'm just trying to get a number in my head, what one percent costs, and so then, um.
So, so you're saying that then the employee, the non. Sheriff personnel is, uh, the non. Yeah, or they would get a raise possibly in their, uh, retirement fund next year, is that, is that?
It goes up next year.
Okay, so we're kind of on odd even topic.
What, what we did on the law enforcement side is that there's a three-year cycle of, um, of, and increases in there. And when we talked last year, we talked about what portion was the county gonna pay, what portion was the employee gonna pay. And we decided that we would split that. So the county came up, uh, to. Be equal actuation as the rest of the county employees are. And then this year was another increase, one point eight percent.
Right.
And so. The employees will, um, contribute point nine percent to it, and the county's gonna contribute another point nine percent.
Which I, I understand that part, I guess.
Yeah, so, um, Amanda would, sorry to take you more. So point nine percent to everybody who wasn't a sworn officer as a bonus, could we do that? To equal it this year, um, because. We are doing one point nine, or considering, not saying any what we are doing, we're considering one point nine to sworn deputies. But only giving one percent right now, I would like to not. Be in their salary, because that's a continual bump up year after year. But to make it equitable for this year. So that. A non-sworn officer would get, or non-sworn person would get one point nine, one percent in salary, cost of living adjustment. And maybe point nine in some other way that, that's not repeating. Um, and then the sworn officers would be. One percent cost of living, point nine going to retirement, do you see my point? The, so we're one point nine for everybody.
So if you put one point nine in there, um. The point nine in retirement and the one in law, it would take you up to one thirty-four, four sixty-one, point fifteen.
Okay, and tell me what that would give, give me, because I've been all over the map.
So that, that would be a one point nine percent across all employees.
Would be, yeah.
For all one hundred and sixty-three.
You didn't include department heads.
Oh.
And then, is that for law enforcement?
Which is, yeah. I'm just answering this question.
So it'd be point nine to one percent for everybody, point nine for sworn officers into their retirement, point nine to the employees in some other form. And that would be one, three, four.
Four sixty-one, point one five.
Okay, it was off by thirty-five cents, okay. Now we come out of the salary reserve account.
They can.
And, and the retirement can't come out of the salary reserve account also as well.
Yeah, you, salary reserve would be, I feel for all things salary related, payroll related.
Okay, okay, perfect. And then if we put that same on department head, and we can't do any elected officials, my, my apologies for that uh legislation.
Personally, I don't know, when you start talking percentages on salaries, the department heads probably don't need to be included in that, I don't know, speaking for myself.
Okay. It makes it difficult when we are capped at uh elected officials, uh, at what we do every four years or whatever.
So, but one percent on department head salary, it's a lot different, one percent on.
Employees. Yeah, right, right. What is that? Do you, are you able to answer that, Amanda?
You wanna know what it would be to put department heads in there?
Yep.
Maybe three six, um, eight thousand forty six dollars and eighteen cents.
So you said, number of that, eight thousand?
Forty six dollars and eighteen cents.
And that's just the one percent.
Oh, one percent for the department heads and one point nine percent for staff employees.
That is, yes.
And does that put any current, um, department head above the OS page elected official? That isn't a commissioner.
And they'd all be just, just under.
Now we bring our total up to thirty two, hundred and forty two thousand five hundred and seven dollars.
Thirty two cents.
And thirty three cents, yes ma'am. Then we could have just elected officials next year, or it's the following year, twenty seven.
Twenty six. They'll go under five in twenty seven. No, it'll be ne- next July. Twenty twenty six.
Next July.
No, June, June, it has to happen before, it happens after filing, but, but it happens before. No, it's like the first week of June, I can't remember the exact wording, but they didn't want to take effect until January one of twenty seven. And you can, just so you guys know too, you can stagger them, so you can do your one can be this, your two can be this, your three, your four, it doesn't have to be the same for the full four years. I know some counties do it that way, look at it like almost like a cost of living every year, instead of increasing it all at once or whatnot, they can, you can do that. I don't know.
Yeah, I think I wanna just ask you a question for my, I only have one county employee, so like Bailey would that have, would any of the grant positions be able to get this?
What's up to you? No, they wouldn't get this.
Yeah.
They get, I mean Zach, you know, they're gonna cut off.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, like, because they're all. And then the rest of us are state employees. Yeah.
Kayla, thanks for that, you, if I'm still here, would you bring that up?
Yep, I will.
Remembered or known. Voted that way.
She should still be here when we.
We'll be here.
Yeah, you will be, since you haven't gone through the election yet.
It'll happen in twenty six.
So any, any thoughts?
I'm okay with it, um, I, I, yeah, the best we can do to keep up with the cost of living, it, and I I think Laramie's probably even higher than the two plus percent, so.
Okay, so if we, if we're hearing you correctly, you wanna do one percent for department heads, one point nine percent for regular employees. The one percent for the law enforcement is already built in to your budget, correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, it's not.
This would be adding.
This would be adding it in, but you've added it into that number. Okay, so.
Okay.
Is that correct? And then, so for law enforcement, for retirement though, you wanna do point nine to the employee and point nine to the county.
Yeah.
Employer employee.
For a total on county expenditure to law enforcement of one point nine, between salary and, and retirement.
Okay, correct, okay. I'll make sure I'm hearing it right, okay.
And the point nine for employees though is just a one-time, like stipend type situation.
Yeah, I think she just did it in.
If that's, you, you can do that, yeah, okay.
A COL or cost of living?
No, we don't. We don't do cost of living, because some of your grants don't have the funding to pick that up, if you do cost of living, you have to do it for everybody.
This is why I ask about statutorily phrasing things.
So each, I mean, each grant will have to look at individually, like, I mean Kate's already texting me. Um, like Zach, we probably won't be able to do that for him, it won't, we don't, there's no money in that grant. Um, Kate will look at when the grant comes in, prime victim witness. I mean, we'll all look at it each individual. I honestly did not expect you guys to do that this year, so when we budgeted all of our grants, we didn't put any research in for any money. So, what we can do for them.
I mean, I'll take some of my cuts back and put it in a separate pot for my, like, pool and.
Well, I think that's kind of the idea. But. Terry, do you have anything?
No, I think that um, I'm fine, if I, if I have something, I'll sure jump in.
Okay. And I think it just bears to, to say to y'all, thank you, uh, this year, your purchasing power will be at least point five percent less for doing the same work or better. This is, I hope it's not reported as a raise, um, because it certainly ain't, um. And we are bound to not do cost of living adjustments or by the statute, the rule. So people are losing money, um, and I just want that to be clear, um, to, to folks.
Okay, so we got all that figured out, are you comfortable with that, Amanda?
Tracy does that all math, we're still.
We'll start updating everything.
And I'll have to update all of the individual.
Things there's.
Nothing that's in the red. Does anybody else have any questions or suggestions?
I have a quick question, do we still have the sign budgeted and um, the solar for this roof and IT?
It was still in there.
It's in. Um, they are both in the county building contingent. Hundred and seventy seven for the solar array and a hundred and three for the sign.
Danny did you hear?
Sorry, no. All right, a hundred and seventy seven for the solar arrays and a hundred and three for signs.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Does that also include the SAR building?
No, SAR um, is in my uh grant match budget, because it is matching a grant.
What's that? I think because.
I think because we have money in.
Yeah, um, I think we did from cap can at the end of last, because it was at a weird timing.
So if I'm seeing numbers in red, um, on the two oh nine grant match. One's attorney reimbursement of thirty thousand and the others, uh.
Oh, are you on the total spreadsheet?
I'm in the grant match.
The grant match actual expenditure worksheet?
Yep.
Are you on two oh nine, is that what you said?
Yeah.
That's one percent. Two oh nine is grant match.
Okay.
But are you in the one percent? Can I come around this year?
Oh, I don't, sure. We're all trying to stay on the safety sheet.
You're on the bunch of totals worksheet, so those are just the incoming. And those are.
I just wanted to make.
Red to make sure we look at them every year.
Got it. I was hoping if it was a negative number, that'd be a bracket, so that's.
Yes, it's formatted for negatives to be bracketed.
We had to have this conversation, so that's what I was.
Is there anything else you guys? You all need from us.
And we've worked out the increase in health insurance premiums.
Just actually.
Do we need that?
So we increased it to three, three, that will increase it to, it's a eight hundred thousand dollar increase in the health insurance premiums.
But that is figured into this budget.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's, yeah, I'm Albany County Employee Health Benefits, that one million eighty four thousand two hundred.
Uh, let me get to that tab.
I would ask for a larger spreadsheet, but I don't think that, that'll do any good.
Well, we could get a bigger.
I'm sure you could, you won't let me touch it anyway, so.
You're right. That's absolutely correct.
What's your elected force, there we go.
Are you on the line that's blue for the million eighty four?
I have no blue lines.
Where are you seeing, where are you at?
At the total, so for goodness sakes.
Remember I said don't ever look at them?
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, and I have updated this.
Okay.
That's now two million of cash.
All right, of course.
But that's three million, um, everything else is correct. So three million of cash coming in.
Just gonna sit quietly with questions.
Okay. And I'm gonna keep you.
I'm gonna get two screens next year.
Hey, it's Tracy, where are you at with your numbers to know? Is there anything that we're gonna be able to allocate to emergency reserves, contingency, anything?
Um, it's still too premature.
It's super difficult with the new, that my lack of experience with the new software. Um, finding the cash reports and then I'm trying to go through each one and vet them all to make sure that we did in fact fit all the right balances in there. Which is pretty time consuming, considering our system has three hundred and plus different funds to go through and reconcile individually. But I'm pretty close, um, on the general fund cash on hand, I'm estimating this short of one point six million, which I was saying earlier, um, Kayla, that, that does not include PILT. So PILT comes in like last year at one point nine million, then we have more than covered our shortfall, plus um, have monies for transferring. Now, grant match, not knowing what vouchers are yet to be submitted for the June twenty fifth run, I don't have the beginning, gaining cash there. Cause those fun, that's one of those funds that we zero. So if she has a hundred thousand dollars in your grant match and you have requests of million, nine thousand, that's not even. Um, we only need to transfer in the difference between those, so nine hundred and fifty nine thousand. And that, that's kind of where we're at with those. The only other thing is, um, for cash on hand is on the specific purpose tax. Those need to be updated, those are last year's numbers still. Um, I'm working on those. Is that system, once again, it's weird, I think we're gonna have to have a new fund for each and every one of those projects to isolate them and make the auditors happy. But if there's any other projects that can be diverted, that are maybe in the general fund, to save money there, diverted here, it'd be great, like a hundred and seventy three dollars and seventy nine cents towards maybe some vests. Let's get rid of that.
One seventy three, one hundred and seventy three dollars and seventy nine cents.
We didn't even know that those, you're just talking about those.
I'm pretty sure we gave you that.
We're about to have an invoice coming soon. We'll pull some, we'll pull whatever.
There's the hundred and sixty three fifty on the two thousand one.
When you had those two accounts last month, we didn't even know that those two existed, the one that has like eighty nine dollars in it, and then you know, it's got like a hundred and eighty dollars in it.
I'm pretty sure when you took office, we informed you.
We must have forgotten.
I mean, there's only three hundred and stuff.
Yeah.
Between all of us to share, so it's easy to forget.
Did you guys let Rock River know that they have money also?
On which one?
Oh, I thought that's, Rock River had some leftover money for water infrastructure.
No, we went and kept Rock River's money, they get their money, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and just an FYI, um, Rock River paid off their bonds, so all the specific purpose tax of twenty eighteen is now going directly to them. Um, the airport, I think, is also looking at paying off all their bonds, I think we should do the same.
Well, I believe the money and the, in the cash on hand and the specific purpose tax to do that. I can get better numbers, I mean, it doesn't have to be budgeted or decided today by any means, but it'd be good to get those.
Speaking about specific purpose tax, we need to set up a meeting with the county, the city and Rock River regarding that. Probably sooner than later, um. It's really hard to try to coordinate three legal entities.
I would encourage you guys to set up.
Oh yeah, we'll have to have multiple meetings is what we're gonna have to have, but Nancy from the city had reached out. Wanting to know. You believe that missionaries should have their meeting and prioritize all the projects that were put in. Um, because you're going to have to negotiate with the other two entities of how much. And I have sent a preliminary email to Todd Bishop, he's with Kaiser Wealth Management, he's the one that's done our bonding and helped um, with all that process before, and he would be happy to join in at the end to help us with if any bonding costs need to be calculated. And he thought, sometimes he brings, um, we and Coons the attorneys that do all the specific purpose tax and help us with the bonding as well.
We have a folder, we're all open requests.
I.
We can have it on on the public.
We can make a thing on the public driving, and then that would be easier for everybody just to, yeah.
That would be super useful.
We'll do that. We'll do that.
Just, just my suggestion from the sheriff's office. I would, I would start scheduling meetings starting in August. Probably have them if not every month, every couple of months up until you get to the deadline and what you need to put on that ballot.
Yeah.
Give you time to figure out bonding issues on our side on the county. Um, and then also be able to evaluate and screen all the requested projects on the county side.
And have we given a deadline for the projects yet? So if they're not in by this date, then they're just gonna have to wait till the next bonding.
Um, everything, we sent out that preliminary email that we had that that deadlines passed already for people to put in projects. Of course, you can, as needs may arise, you might consider additional ones, but we did that back in. I feel like it was right after the first of the year, Tracy. I think you're right. And or January. Um, and I'm just gonna resend that here. Email.
And I guess would you, just from my perspective, would you help us understand if there's some other way to pay for whatever is requested?
Oh, gotcha. In the Svet, is that what you're talking about? What's being requested? Is there any?
Is there like some other fun impact assistance or something that we could use so that we can filter out things and that would be super helpful.
I just emailed you. Give it back to me too. I think the biggest thing is council is probably the hardest to, they have way more people than we do. Um. So I'll try to come up with some dates with her who I can throw out. And then I will get ahold of Jody up in Rock River.
And if they'd be amenable and we get a smaller group than nine uh counselors, if that made scheduling easier.
At least just for the meeting part. I mean, they're not making any decisions. It would be a lot of discussion.
Right.
And maybe they have a committee, you know, like a committee or something of three counselors or something that could. I just resent the email that has the projects under the.
Thanks.
It's a February nineteenth.
This used to be muted.
And is there anything else that we need to to decide on? Today that you know of?
So we will work, Tracy, Sunny and Amanda and I will work on getting the proposed budget to the paper. We have to have it there. Descended on Thursday to advertise on Saturday. Um, when we get that, we can forward it on to you guys too. And then I mean, really during the public hearing is gonna be the biggest where Tracy will probably have better num, she'll have to have better numbers by then. She will, because it'll obviously be the day before the fiscal year end, but or the day of the, the last day of the fiscal year. We better have had.
Yeah.
But we'll have a better idea if you guys want to transfer into contingency or if you want to do something like that. So that, I mean, really, we can't do that until the hearing date anyway. Amanda will update all of the departments with their salary lines with that increase. I didn't have any more questions. Did anybody else have any questions about their budgets or you may find any revenue streams?
I just have a, I guess, a broad question. Are we statutorily required to stay on a fiscal year from July one?
Does it have to be published for seven days or seven days out?
Seven days prior to at least seven days.
But we don't.
We couldn't even, we couldn't even advertise for seven days because we don't, the paper's not even. We'll put it on the website too. Of course, we have our statute, statutorily required to post it on the website as well. So the day that I, usually the day I send it to the paper, I put it on the website. So it's on the website, usually three days before it's even posted in the papers.
So Tracy, as you're looking at it right now, minus zero dollar, zero dollars for PILT, where are we minus one point sevenish?
Uh, we would probably, without if PILT didn't come in at all, um, we would probably be a hundred thousand dollars short of covering that budget.
Okay.
So I have a question and I don't know when the appropriate time is to bring this up, but if we wanted to talk about a reallocation of of mills, um, when would we, when would we talk about that?
I think now would probably be a good time if, um, because like the level funding program isn't, I mean, they don't get the money directly based off of mill levy now, Terry. They get it based on the historical mill levy distribution. Um, but if you wanted to change that where how that the mill levy distribution would change, um, it would shift that level funding amount. So if you wanted to give the fairgrounds more, um, you'd have to take away from county or library or both. Or, you know, any of that combination thereof.
Okay, because I do think we need to do some reallocation. Um. And I think it needs to come from the library to the fairgrounds because of the increased public use of the fairgrounds. I think that needs between those two entities, it needs to be more equalized in what the fairgrounds gets. So I'm open to discussion.
Uh, just so, and this is just so everybody knows what the mill levy amounts are. So going back to when they did get the straight mill levies, the library got one point six three two and the fairgrounds got point four six seven. And the county general fund nine point nine zero one. And you can split those any way that you choose. Um, I know when Chelsea does her, she has the county getting the full twelve mill because, like I said, we don't necessarily give them the mills, but but we base that level funding on the mills.
And is the hospital district gets three mills, isn't it correct?
Yeah, that's, um, I think the twelve mills is the only thing that you can, and Chelsea, I hope you're on there, um, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the twelve mills is the only thing you guys can change. Is everything is also set by statute.
Yes, that's correct.
I thought it was up to three mills for like the hospital district. And if they wanted more than that, they had to request more, but I didn't know that it was fixed at three.
It could be up to three, but I don't think the commissioners have the authority to change it. I don't know that is, that's a Chelsea. I mean, that's my own.
Okay.
Yes, I agree. I think commissioners can only adjust the county mills. It would be up to the other taxing authorities to adjust their mills.
Jennifer, could you look at that? Um. And I'll, and I'll do some research too with the county commission association.
I will. I'll do some research for you.
Thank you. And you, could you give me those mills again, please?
Library is one point six three two. Fairgrounds is point four six seven.
Okay.
And county general fund is nine point nine zero one.
Okay.
Jerry, what do you want to do with the mill adjustment? What do you?
Did you say something to me, Thad?
Yeah, what, what are you wanting to do with the mill adjustment?
Well, I'd like, I think that it needs to be more equitable between the, the fair board and and the library.
And do these mills just go to each one's general fund or do they have a destination? Specifically in the library, specifically fairgrounds.
Operations.
Operations, it's the same.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the, the fairgrounds has a tremendous amount of real estate it needs to take care of as well as just the massive increased numbers of people that are using the fairgrounds for so many different different things. It's not, I mean, it's gone way beyond just four H. I mean, it's it's a community is using the fairgrounds. And they need to maintain all those buildings and.
So between the two entities, they're getting my one million three hundred thirty three thousand six hundred and fifty one dollars. And of that, the fairgrounds collecting twenty two percent of that number and the library's getting seventy eight.
Correct.
Okay.
And then I think just another part of the equation is what can they generate? So library really doesn't have a service that can generate any income. Beyond the booking of their rooms, you know, there's parking facility or RV facility out at the fairgrounds. So, um, figuring that into the accounting would be really useful.
Which I would say is also impaired right now because of their construction. The libraries.
Right, right, yeah. I guess I don't know what those numbers are off the top of my head and I can't expect you guys know what they are either.
Like any of us know exactly.
I guess I'm trying to figure out what a more equitable redistribution would be.
We have, uh, Ruth will come in and give us an idea of of.
They're, they're both.
Why they're both on?
They are.
Are you guys prepared to talk about this? I know this is kind of thrown on you both. Um. Just kind of would like to take, but, uh, since you guys work in that space, um, you know more about it than than I do for sure.
Yeah, I think for sure I can answer any questions that you might have. Um, specifically, we are um, Thad came out yesterday morning, but we are now dealing with, um, issues with our vault, which services all of our irrigations.
I'm gonna stop you right there. That was bad practice done a long time ago that should have been corrected a long time ago.
Right, yeah, hundred percent.
Oh, so and and the cost of that repair wasn't that that detrimental. But I, I will say that the buildings out there have been aging. Um, and not to interrupt you, but you, you can't bring that vault situation in. That was, that should have been corrected a long time ago.
Oh, no, I agree. But that's the kind, that's what I was gonna say with that is the, the things that we're getting into now were things that had not been repaired in the past. And things that had not been dealt with correctly or with the proper folks to basically fix them up to standard. Um, and so that's kind of where we're sitting now. We are seeing more folks coming out here and using the facility. We have adjusted our prices. Um, we have done things that we have seen some more generated income. Um, however, we are seeing a higher input into our facilities and into the maintenance specifically, like some of these projects that are coming up and and we're having to go in and and fix things that should have been fixed a long time ago and aren't. And so those are the bills that we're seeing now.
And Taylor, have you made a request for the, uh, Svet tax for those repairs?
Um, for one of them, I think you have two things on the Svet tax. Um, our.
One point one million.
Yeah, our grandstands really need attention. We have some major, major issues that are starting with those. Um, and then, uh, we're gonna, we, we need some other, we need the building rewrapped, the main building. Um, our current metal that's on the side of the building is deteriorating at the concrete level. Um, it's all rusting off and we're having that in multiple barns. So we're running into those issues now too, where we're, we're trying to keep up the integrity of the existing eighteen structures that we have to maintain here.
It is, what would you say a percentage of that repair has been that you've, uh, put forward for this Svet twenty twenty six proposal?
Um, I looked at it when Tracy just sent it out and I replied back to her because I thought that the grandstands were on there.
It is. It's one point one million for the grandstands.
Yeah.
Seven, a three quarter million for, uh, sheep and swine barn. There's a tractor on there. Uh, new siding for activity building, which would be the one she just mentioned. Um, and then building repairs and upgrades.
Yeah.
For seven hundred thousand. I guess my other option for this money and it's just disbursement, um, would offset the distribution every other year or every two years so that if we swing the percentage slightly enough so that the library can do larger significant repairs one year and then the next year it would, there, there'd be like a five percent uh, cushion in there that would swing one direction or the other to allow for more significant repairs. Um, in general operations so that the fairgrounds of the library would know, we can't cover it this year, but next year if we have a major an AC unit or something that it would flex up and down would be my my thought on doing it.
I think that's a really good suggestion, Thad.
I, I just, I think it, I, does that work for you, Rachel, if we were to come up with a system like that? So I, I realize you're probably getting a lot taken care of right now, um, through the construction process, but does that help for long term planning? If you know there's a little bit of lottery money coming every other year or every two years?
Yeah, um, yeah. So a couple of things. I mean, this is always like a hard and awkward, right? Cause I think the fair board is doing great and also needs more money. So that's, um, on that side, I think for us, like even if we did that swing, so yes, like that swing in theory, um, would help and like because we've had a lot of those delays, we always have an HVAC something. Um, in the last eight years, we've caught up on some maintenance things, but there's still more on like the main part of the building. So I think with that. Um, even with that though, right now, the majority of our mill levy is personnel. So if we're, we were gonna do that swing, like regardless if we're, if we're reducing on that level, um, I have, like, we will lose service hours and I will lose staff. Like that's, like, if we reduce money, I have to cut my personnel budget and we lose Sundays is kind of what we're, what I'd be looking at on my end.
And Rachel, have you put anything in for the twenty twenty-six S P E T request?
We did, we put in some additional building things. So the way that I had, I'd actually in my head like four years ago been kind of gearing up for this moment to come to y'all with a bonded issue to ask for a new building. And then we got this massive infrastructure grant to do meeting rooms, so we don't need a new building. We've given a lot of life to this building. We just need, we need some updates toward children's area. It's still pretty outdated. And some updates to staff areas. And then we also put in some landscaping to improve and streamline what we have outside, the hope being that we could cut down, make it look nice, but not take a lot of work. So what we put in for was again, kind of continuing to keep that building to give this building many decades of life going forward.
Yeah, Rachel, you've got three hundred thousand for remodeling children's area. New landscaping on west and north side for a hundred and fifty thousand. New roof for seventy-five, is that still needed?
The new roof will probably change. We're still, some of that is still in progress and figuring out some pieces with our, with our grant and contractor, but we do have approval to extend this contract into updating more sections of our roof. So I don't know yet. But I don't think it will be necessary for that seventy-five for the new roof. We should be taking care of.
Okay, and then twenty-five thousand for drop ceiling at drop seat, oh.
To add a drop ceiling, yeah, to install, yeah. Yeah, if you've ever, if you've ever been in the staff area, when you look up, it's that massive gross, yeah, but like five inches thick.
Yeah. Well, I agree there, we need to do something to to equal, not equalize it, but that's right, we're equity for both. We just need to, I don't know that we're gonna be able to do it between now and the thirteen days we have left. Because that's gonna be a massive readjustment.
Right, but I think the thing is, is that that this needs to be talked about and and.
No, I agree. Yep. Beyond this, do we have anything else?
I don't believe so. Tracy, I just was looking at my notes on the abandoned vehicle fund. Do we need to budget more in there?
At the rate we're going, we're probably will have to transfer something from somewhere into the if things stay what they're acting like right now.
So can you explain that to me how much they're making on? So an abandoned vehicle, because it goes to the sheriff's sale, right? So so they've been typically selling each vehicle for thirty dollars and yet we pay storage mileage and other fees of seven hundred and twenty dollars per vehicle. And the only revenue outside that thirty dollars going into that fund is one dollar for every title you sell. And statutorily, we need to keep little difference in opinion with under Sheriff Beeston. I think it's a minimum of one dollar per citizen. He thinks it's up to one dollar. Regardless, we don't have enough money to fund.
Is that gonna change a little bit, Sheriff, with how you're storing?
So what we did, what we do now is we're here, so we're in this transition where we're no longer going to be storing vehicles come July one with local tow truck drivers. As as Tracy pointed out, what we're selling them back to the tow truck drivers versus what we're paying out for the storage costs is pennies on the dollar. So we're going to flip that around and we'll start storing them at SAR, which cuts like almost seven hundred dollars off of off of the storage costs. It's a hundred dollars to tow. Can't charge more than a hundred dollars per tow. And I believe it's six hundred and sixty dollars for for storage.
It's twenty dollars a day to a maximum of.
Six hundred something. We just read the statute.
Yeah.
So I'm looking to see where I can defer those costs. So and then we will go to a public auction format. So the transition that we're having now is that we've upped the cost that we're selling back to the tow truck drivers right now. Because we, I think total, we had about ninety abandoned vehicles still on lots. We just sold thirty of them last week or the week before.
Yeah, because I just saw the sales stuff come up.
Uh, we upped the price from thirty dollars to a hundred bucks a ton to kind of defer some of those costs. Some of the tow truck drivers have comments that they want to go back to the old way. I've told them it's probably too late. We have one local school truck driver that I won't name that screwed it up for everybody. And so.
And turns around and sells them on Facebook for.
Very much so. And so other sheriff's op, we're, we're one of the few sheriff's offices in the state that still does abandoned vehicles the way that we do them.
How many other ones do it?
They do it by public auction. That's per state statute that's outlined in there that you can do it in one of two ways. You either sell it back to the tow truck drivers on there, or you can sell it at a public auction. So we're going, like I said, we're gonna be moving to a public auction. That way we can drop the large cost and storage cost that we have. I have the county attorney's office looking into deferring some of those costs to some of the entities that create more of the costs and more of the issues that other entities as well, so.
Is that, can you have those?
I read through the statute, like I said, I'm not a lawyer, but I know the law. And there isn't anything in the statute that says I cannot defer those costs to other entities. Which, and that's me beating around the bush, but being frank, that's me charging the city. The city accounts for about eighty-five percent of our tows. So me, my office and the other two entities, which is U W P D and the Wyoming Highway Patrol only account for about fifteen percent of the total abandoned vehicle tows. So there's some other little legal issues with those abandoned vehicle tows as well that we discussed with C P D that we have a difference of opinions on how to go about doing that. So if the difference of opinions continue to persist, then some tough decisions will be made on my end on how we will be moving forward. Won't be asking questions anymore, will be dictating policy.
Does anybody know what they're putting in that lot across from the police department to the west?
I don't know what's going on, but.
Oh, I was just thinking of empty car, or vacant vehicles.
So what we'll do is we have room at SAR on that north side on there, and there's no other than some of the advertisement requirements that we have for public auction. There is no limit on how many public auctions that we have for abandoned vehicles, so.
And you said you're starting that July one?
We're gonna try and start that July one.
How many do we normally, or do you get billed for a tow? Is that gonna, is your yard gonna fill up awfully quick or is it gonna be?
Um, yes, it'll get filled up a little bit just because the city hasn't stopped all of the abandoned vehicle tows in the three places where they tow abandoned vehicles in town.
Okay.
So we're trying to reduce the number of those as well. The sheriff's office doesn't believe that all of those are truly legal abandoned vehicles. In fact, most of them are not. So there's also not a requirement to remove an abandoned motor vehicle you can cite under that statute and leave the motor vehicle there. We've suggested that as well. So believe that some of the abandoned motor vehicles are being towed under municipal code and not state statute.
Is there any way with the vehicle, so if you do it the way you're doing it right now, to sell the vehicle so that it's more of a wash on what the tow truck companies are billing the county for?
Yes, yes, we wanted to sell them for seven hundred and sixty dollars a piece. That way there was essentially.
They're gonna make money either way.
They'll make money on the back end when they chop it up. Resell it after they get a title underneath their company. But none of our none of our tow companies were very receptive to that once they started to find out that they could collect their storage costs. A lot of them have told my office in one way or another that they would like to go back to the old way. But I, I can't necessarily budget and I can't trust that it's gonna stay that way if we do, so. Those tow truck drivers change hands. So, and they change ideas as the wind blows.
Whatever, whatever puts the most money in the pocket at the time?
For the most part, and so from the county's perspective, like I said, all of that is tax money for the most part that goes out there. We have to be as prudent as we possibly can. So I will be, like I said, cutting as much cost as I possibly can on that, on that way. And if that means that tow truck drivers have to find a different way to make money, then so be it.
I think they shouldn't have done so greedy.
Yep, and if the way, if the city has to change the way that they do abandoned vehicles, so be it as well.
So you are, you're not required to deal with the city's abandoned vehicle?
I am required.
But he's saying the city doesn't necessarily need to tow all the equipment.
Yeah.
The city doesn't need to tow as many as they're towing. And there isn't anything in statute that says I can't charge the city for those tows. I'm still, like I said, county attorney, so get back to me to see how legal that is. I haven't found any case law. Either way, says I can't or that I can't, so. And like I said, we'll see. We might, we might move forward and just see how that, how that shakes out legally as well.
June, Aaron, did you get a chance to recalculate what the housing of municipal prisoners amount would be for the new year with a new rate?
Yeah, I did. Sorry, I forgot. It's just, we had, let me bring it up. I think it's four hundred and ninety-seven municipal inmates last year.
And this is at the hundred dollar?
No, this would be at the hundred dollar. Total in twenty twenty-four, sorry, four hundred and fifty-seven, not four hundred and ninety-seven. Four hundred and fifty-seven inmates with the new proposed rate, it'd be a hundred dollars flat rate whether they're for release or okay, so if you just conservatively estimate that every inmate, all four hundred and fifty-seven of those arrests from from the municipal court was at least one day. It's gonna come out to a hundred two zeros, forty-five thousand, forty-five thousand seven hundred.
Currently have budgeted sixty thousand at a lower rate. So that does not make sense to me.
It is the most, that's why I said it's conservative. If all of them are in there one day, a lot of them won't be in there for one day. A lot of them will be in there for multiple days.
So should I drop your sixty thousand to forty-five thousand decreasing with fifteen thousand?
No, I think you should be there. At the sixty thousand.
Yeah, because it can't go any lower than forty-five seven if I'm hearing you correctly.
Unless they stop arresting people.
Correct.
Real quick on the abandoned vehicle uh, public auction, can anything be in that auction?
Yes, well, so, so there's a couple of things based on, I think, what you're saying here. An abandoned vehicle auction is abandoned vehicles. Now, there's a lot of different vehicles that are considered abandoned in there, unfortunately, like campers, house trailers, AGVs can all go in there, but that has to have set up, so. If you want to throw in some of your your old equipment from Roden Bridge, that would just be a regular public auction, which we can have.
Just have to advertise it different?
Yep, we have to advertise it different. Anything that's below fifty dollars can just be just anything above fifty dollars can then go to auction. We have to publish a list and and publicize it, and then we can hold that auction.
Otherwise, we just need to tow it out and park it on the street somewhere.
You don't need to tow it out. I've seen what you've got sitting down there. You can pick it up and move it yourself.
On the, on the note of a public auction, you probably do need to have a surplus property auction because we're at the point of not having used our sales tax license and they could revoke it. So now you won't collect on motor vehicles because they're gonna come to my office. That's a whole different thing, but if there's desks and all that, we still have to collect sales tax.
Have a guards.
Have a guards, sales tax at the time of sale, so we can embed it and get it reactivated.
We, we have a list for abandoned property evidence list for, to go to auction. Do we have to charge sale tax for that as well?
If it is like non-vehicle items, you should be, I believe, yes.
Okay, we haven't, we haven't had one and like I said, that, that list is also at the county attorney's office, but I wasn't aware that we have to charge sale tax with it, so that'll be something noted when we get to that auction.
And then we'll have to account for that differently, so as we do a report annually. Get that on there, but that would be great because then we can not lose our sales tax.
Sounds good.
Jennifer, do you remember that question I asked you about that surplus email? Would that be what we're talking about here?
That is, I was gonna say that is something we could do there, Kayla.
Okay.
I guess, I guess my other question is, are, speaking of vehicles, are the two that Chelsea requested in the budget as well?
Yes.
They are, okay, okay.
We are. We do budget that.
Okay.
Thank you for asking. That was one of my notes too. And that worksheet, they're in the vehicle replacement.
Okay.
And then the money transferring in from direct aid into vehicle replacement.
I just wanted to make sure.
And is what I was asking Jennifer about. Back to your question, Terry, as well about talking to Jeremiah about that on the big purchasing, they also have, W C C A has a person that you can do a surplus sales through as well, and it's a kind of a system that does it for you. So I'll look into it with Jennifer and maybe we could do something through there. That's what I was asking about.
An online surplus.
That, thank you for thinking of that, Kayla.
Yeah, no, I, well, I was asking Jennifer about it too because I was like, Jeremiah said there are still some counties that haven't signed up, but it's not because they don't want, it's just they haven't done it, but I think it's just basically a platform that you can use for your surplus sales. Is it the public surplus?
Sure.
Auction site?
No, I don't.
Did we do something like that the last time or something with the painters or?
We did, well, we did our own.
And then we had to stick up. It was kind of like a silent auction.
I think we did silent bid, yeah. Or sealed bid, yeah.
Sealed bid.
Yeah, so we'll get there.
Yeah.
If there's, you know, any interest in using public surplus online auction, I do know.
Somebody who's.
Who's a pretty much an expert in it. It's a
Yeah.
The public surplus program is what it is. Tracy, I'll forward it to you to see, look at it too, but I had Jennifer look at it as well, so. But it might be something we want to use. I'm not saying we have to, but I think it's just in their platform. Other than that, I think we have our Archie orders. Get our numbers. If you else has any questions.
Anybody else? Going once, going twice. Terry, do you have anything?
Nope.
Excellent.
I make a motion?
Sure.
Will you adjourn?
Yeah. Second, fourth second.
We don't have to.
Okay, let's do it. I I'm in favor as well, so we're, we're good. Thank you.